To amend Section 10.10 to allow cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, research and development in new buildings in the Highway Business zoning district. Jeff, you sent out a couple of things today. Do you want to just sort of lay the groundwork?
Sure. Yep. I will. I'll be happy to. Based on the discussions during the last meeting in particular, where I think some of the primary, there were some, there were some primary questions that were raised in terms of the amendment. And so just to try to offer some response or some changes to the language, I put together another version of the amendment to see if it would help respond to some of those issues and concerns raised. So in a second, I'll share my screen. But you know, the idea is that, you know, there's a couple of questions about the character of Route 10 and potentially how, you know, the addition of cultivation buildings may or may not change that. So this is for discussion tonight to see if, if it gets closer to things that are compatible with the district itself. So if you bear with me for a moment, I'm going to share the screen. This information is available on Planning Department website under the zoning amendments tab. So there are also a series of preliminary GIS assessments based on a couple of questions that we got, that we went through last time. So I'll give you the overview and then I think, you know, for the planning board and ordinance members to just talk through it. The discussion last time was trying to put this cannabis cultivation use in with, in, in another section of our ordinance that already exists. So it's the planned business development, which sets forth some standards that during the first couple of meetings, the, there were some questions about making sure there were enough guidelines for this type of use to occur. And so Section 8.1 has actually quite a bit of standards that are useful. And I can go over those. I'll touch on them in a minute. But after the discussion on the 28th of July, you know, a couple of things kind of in my mind, and this isn't intended to be the absolute comprehensive review, but this was the things that I thought we could respond to via text. So the version number two here on the screen really seeks to say that in the Highway Business District, you can do a retail cannabis establishment already. And so that is really preserved here. And then, so the language, it's a little, it's a little like wonky, but it's how we kind of work through the zoning. So a cannabis establishment shall be permitted, provided that any cannabis establishment other than one that is solely retail shall comply with the planned business development requirements under Section 8.1. And so last time, there was a document that listed out all the provisions of 8.1 and kind of did a line by line response to that. So what I heard was there were a couple of things that could be potentially modified or added on to or changed. So, so some of the elements of Section 8.1 are very useful and desirable. And a couple of them seem like maybe we want to, to add or subtract a couple of things. So in this document here, the text in red is kind of opposed zoning language. And then what I tried to do to the best of my ability was to call out the new language in italics here and just give a, a kind of an overview of what it is and why. And as we go through this process, it starts to build some of the sort of like some potential legislative intent. So, you know, if and when this moves to City Council, there's some background. So, you know, like I say in this first bullet, there are quite a few provisions of Section 8.1 that are desirable and that give the planning board greater control in reviewing an application. And these include compliance with standard dimensional requirements of Table 6-1 and 6-2. And so that was important based on the previous discussions that, you know, this type of use would be subject to pretty much some of the same standards as other developments in the highway business. So that includes flexibility in considering parking requirements to comply with Section 10.1, which I won't go over specifically, but we have previously looked at that. It has some site and building design standards. And then Section 10.2, which is a set of some environmental standards that does include things, things like emissions and storage of materials. And then based on previous discussions, relying solely on 8.1 could result in proposals that might impact the character of Route 10. So hence the next couple notations. The first thing that we're trying to make different than 8.1 is that a cultivation manufacturing use must be accompanied by a cannabis retail establishment. So this was in response to some questions that we had and talking about the intent of the highway business, which is generally to create areas of commerce that involve members of the public. So the, the conversation that, that stuck in my head and what resulted in this was, you know, if, if an established, by making the zoning, if someone could just do cultivation in the highway business by itself and whether that could create kind of like a dead zone where there are going to be employees coming there, but it's not a business that is traffic orient, you know, traffic generating where people are coming and going. So this element would ensure that no use involving cultivation only would be situated in the highway business. The second except, which is a little letter B, that cultivation manufacturing buildings must be at least 100 feet from Route 10. This is in response to concerns that about the potential for the sighting of larger, especially larger cultivation buildings right up close to Route 10, which I think there was acknowledgement that a bigger building, you know, up front could, would be different than what's there today. And, you know, I'm trying to make a note that a highway business district is really kind of automobile oriented. I am, I am trying to note that 100 feet is a discretionary number, but it is supported by kind of the existence of numerous existing buildings that are situated within the first 100 feet of the road. And so there's a couple of graphics in this packet that just give a preliminary look based on GIS that are, there are quite a few buildings that are within the 100 feet with the associated parking, just to show that it is feasible and, and a pattern in the district that that, that could happen. That kind of distance would be sufficient for other buildings to be located next to the road or for the area to be free from larger buildings. So there would be, it's not required that there be a building there, but it would not be occupied by a large, larger building. And, you know, there was some discussion of the 2013 Highway Business study that, you know, highway businesses dependent on vehicular activity, accessibility and exposure. So either for a building or extensive landscaping. And then the last kind of exception, which is little letter C, just taking a look at that no single cultivation manufacturing building shall be larger than 25,000 square feet. So this is in response to concerns about building size, especially as it could relate to the character of the highway business. That's, that was one element. And the second element was a lot of discussion about the suitability for reusing this building should, should the use evolve over time. I, like 25,000 square feet is intended to be a compromise because right now in the highway business, although we did already identify that the cap, there's a cap for single building retail. So we're acknowledging that we're, we're comparing. So we're trying to align a limit on a limit that already exists. So 50,000 square foot for a building for cultivation would be large. And I think there were some questions about that. So to put it at 50% of that would put it at 25,000 square feet. And the reference points that I have for consideration is, you know, in particular, the community outreach materials for the advanced research park facility showed 22,000 square foot building for cultivation. And then more for local reference and observation, right now on Route 10, the River Valley Co-op is under construction and their building is 23,000 square feet. So it's, it's right in that area. And then the previous materials, especially the, I think it was the first meeting, there was another document that showed other variations of building size. And, and we do have a 50,000 square foot building under construction on O'Neill Street. And so there are some ways to use these to, rather than using your imagination to picture what the size building would be. We have a couple of examples, in particular, real life examples in East Hampton. So one of the questions was about a requirement of 8.1, which requires a property to be three acres. So again, there's a, this is a preliminary assessment. This is the, the property known as Tasty Top, the first image. And then this image is adjacent near Highland Ave. So it is two parcels combined. It's under the same ownership and that's 8.24 acres. For reference, the last planned business development proposal that the city had was this next parcel, which is like 184 North Hampton Street, the three buildings. And so that, you know, that achieves 3.76 acres, just as a reference point, that that's kind of the benchmark. This building is the post office property and it does extend. I kind of, this is why I'm describing them as preliminary, because what I highlighted here was the area of that property that's in the highway business to try to create some kind of equality in measuring this. So the post office property is 4.29 acres. Not that that's necessarily subject to change, but it just shows that there are some properties. For general reference, this is the Cook Building Supply property here. And it may not be a direct correlation because some of the property straddles the industrial district, but taken together, the parcel is of that size. And so some of this just builds on examples. This is the vacant parcel across the street from where River Valley Co-op is going. It's a vacant, you know, develop part, developable parcel of 3.84. This is leaving town towards North Hampton on the north side of O'Neill Street. It's currently in office. The parcel configuration, you know, it may not actually be developable in this way, but it does achieve the acreage that we were asking about. And then kind of just the rough analysis of what 100 feet from Route 10 looks like and why that was, you know, kind of explored. The first image is the gym. There's a gym here. I forgot the name of the gym, but it, it just shows that at 102 feet, you have parking in front of a building within that distance. These are one of the series of office buildings on Route 10. They're the white buildings. I actually should have a little bit of research about how they're occupied, but the example is, is three buildings that achieved kind of that, like being situated within the first 100 feet. Again, this is 106 feet, but it shows that it is possible. This is Abashon Hardware, which looks like they went through a big addition at some point, but the building rooftop in black was right at the original building. And then almost done here. Again, similar, this office building, the top of the page shows that it is possible to get a building and parking within the first 100 feet. That's Cannon Real Estate, I think, is that building. This is, where is that one? I apologize. That one may be a duplicate. And then this is the Sternek Fuel Building on Route 10. So that information is intended to kind of give the planning board and ordinance some, some food for thought and to see how you respond to that and if it in fact helps the conversation along.
Okay, great. So I guess planning board members or, or councillors, any comments, questions, either about the revision or the original language that was proposed last time? Tom?
Yeah, just for clarification, is the idea then that you want parking within the first 100 feet? Or that you want the building set back by at least 100 feet?
Right. So the intent of the language is that new cultivation buildings, buildings used for cultivation or manufacturing would, would have to be at least 100 feet from Route 10. And the idea was to prevent that type of building from being put up close. But within that, there's a range of, I think, development possibilities that the building could be exactly at 100 feet and there could be parking, which actually we see, we see a lot of that in Route, on Route 10, building set back with parking in the front. Or it was to demonstrate, and then the other images are to demonstrate that with some design thought, you could put other buildings or uses up front and have them fit within that distance, which that's kind of the pattern that we see on Route 10 is smaller buildings up front.
Yeah, Owen?
And just to clarify also, so looking through some of the language that you're proposing, and I think these are some good responses to some of the concerns. So if I understand correctly, that if, that you will not be able to build cultivation only, it will have to be attached to some sort of retail, or, or that's the recommended language? Am I hearing that correctly?
You are hearing that that, that's what's put in that language. That's the intent of that language. Yep. And to clarify the, you know, where you have jurisdiction in this language is that it would be cannabis retail, just to be clear, that it would, it would connect the two uses. And again, just to reiterate that that was something that, you know, was heard during that first meeting, that if, if it is just cultivation only, would, would it really meet kind of that purpose or intent of bringing people to that district for something?
Or the manufacturing too, right, Jeff?
Correct. Yep. Sorry. And that's inclusive. Yes.
Yeah, Owen?
I just want to ask a clarifying question too. And this is more procedure for the meeting. Like I stated earlier, I know there's some people here for public speak. I didn't know what, at what point during the meeting you take public speak.
Yes. I usually will take comments from board members and councillors and then we'll open it up to the group as a whole, but we'll definitely give people a chance. I don't know. Board members have any other comments or questions at this point? All right, Brenda, then James?
I had a question about the applicability of putting this or using Section 8.1. Because these businesses are listed under wholesale, transportation and industry. And if you look at 8.12, general description, it says a planned business development shall mean a development constructed blah, blah, blah to accommodate retail and service uses. And then under permitted uses, 8.13, it says uses permitted by special permit and a planned business development shall include all retail and services uses listed in Table 5-1. It doesn't say shall include wholesale transportation and industry. And if you go to Section 8.2, planned industrial development, uses permitted by special permit, it lists, you know, the, the processing of raw materials. It lists agriculture. It lists research. So I'm not, I guess I'm missing something here in terms of our process. How can we take something in the wholesale, transportation and industrial use section and throw it into 8.1 when neither Section 8.1 or Section 8.2 seems to provide for that?
Yeah. So I think basically what we're doing here, Brenda, like the language proposes to do is that you would, that you're basically putting these uses into 8.1. So even though 8.1 doesn't take them, doesn't include them in that language, we do this in other spots too, where we might say, you know, the retail cap for retail space also applies in this section. And so you're just going to tell an applicant or someone who's looking at this that wants to put in a project like this, oh, I also have to comply with all the design standards under 8.1. So it does.
They should have to comply with the standards of 8.2. There's no use stated under permitted uses in 8.1 that a planned business development shall include wholesale transportation and industrial activities.
Yeah. So you're, so it's, that's the way 8.1 is written right now. And the proposed language would tell an applicant under this section, you also have to comply with all those standards. So it's, it's like a shorthand of saying, we could cut and paste all of 8.1 into this new section 10.10. But instead, you're just saying everything that's under 8.1, you also need to apply with, you need to comply with that, even though you wouldn't have if this amendment didn't happen.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm really not getting it and I kind of don't like it. It feels like we're kind of, to me, it feels like these industries are clearly, you know, wholesale transportation and industrial uses. And we are, you know, picking out a one tiny industry from all the others listed in Table 5-1 and treating it differently. I mean, planned industrial developments need 15 acres and that includes greenhouses for agriculture. It includes research. It includes the manufacture and processing of raw materials. If all those three don't encompass what these businesses are, I don't know what do. I mean, I just, I don't, I really don't understand why we're, why we're doing, I mean, I understand why we're doing this. We have an applicant who asked us to, to look at this, but I mean, I really find it really kind of questionable. And down the road, when another industry comes in and, and there's one plot left that's 3.1 acres, you know, I just, I guess I don't understand why we have these sections if we're kind of going to handpick and, and go around and give special treatment to certain industries. I really, I'm kind of concerned about it.
James?
Brenda, I'd like to respond to that, although it wasn't my original point. So I guess I'd like to make two points if I could, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I, I think you're making some really good points. And I struggled often early on and throughout my time on the planning board, fitting the square peg into a round hole in our zoning. And I, I very much am excited by the zoning review that I've heard is, is underway. I know we have some of our city councillors here that are going to be involved in that. That's really cool. But I think that's very important, at least for me in this, to remember, is that we're actually not just allowing this for new builds, but in a way, we're kind of correcting the fact that this can already be done. They can already do this in existing buildings. So putting in that attachment to 8.1 is actually fixing or improving the situation on what's pre-existing. It's allowing that to, to comply with standards that we think are appropriate for something that is already in fact allowed. And then my second point, Mr. Chair, is that we've gone over this extensively. There may be more and I certainly wouldn't want to cut anyone off. I'm very eager to hear it from the public. I don't know how the other board members. Thank you.
Anybody else before we open this up?
I just have one. I also kind of trying to respond to Brenda. I mean, I think there are two questions there that you're asking. And one is a question of mechanics. And I think we're, I think the mechanics are a little clunky, but I think zoning overall is, is that way. I want to, I want to slightly echo what Mr. Zarvis said is that what we're, what we're trying to do is facilitate this discussion of if this is allowable and what kind of regulations or what kind of requirements would we want to see attached to it. So my purpose, and I think the intent is to kind of mechanically align it with these provisions that exist so that it's, it does give some protections for the planning board and for the community going through. So I just ask to think about trying to separate the mechanics from, I think you have raised in the previous meetings, I think, a different kind of concern or question about whether the use may overall be, be suitable in the highway business. And so that one, I don't, I don't challenge that, but I do support the idea of the, the alternative would be to pull out those desirable features of 8.1 and attach them into 10.10, which could be done. But it just doesn't necessarily need to happen because it would just add a whole, like it would add a lot of pages and a lot of extra text in a 10.10. So the mechanics of it, I think could, can work. But I think what I'm here also hearing, and we heard it from in the other means, is there might be sort of an overall question from you about, about whether that's, whether this in general is desirable. So I guess I just wanted to say that it's worth more discussion as we go. But I did, I do think there's kind of two elements to, to your concern. There's a mechanical one, which I think could be overcome, whether, whether the other issue can, and that's, you know, you have to be seen.
Much more eloquent than me, Jeff. Thank you. Okay. Any other members, councillors or planning board members with comments or questions before we open this up? Okay. So we're going to open this up for public comment. So the way we've done this is if you are on Zoom, you should be able to raise your hand if you're on a computer. Also, I think, what did we determine, Jeff? A star nine. If you're calling in from a phone, if you do star nine, that will raise a hand. Or you're, sorry, you can put your name into the comments if you wanted to, in the chat, if you want to put yourself on a list to, to speak. So I guess if anybody has any comments or questions, they can let us know in one of those ways.
I see a regular old hand being raised.
You had an old fashioned hand. It says Kathleen Dunn, but if you unmute yourself, you can.
Yeah. My name's Martin Dunn. It's my wife's iPad. So it came up under her name, but it's.
Can you, Mr. Dunn, can you give us your, can you give us your address real quick?
Yes. It's 89 Madison Avenue in Hoyoke, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Feel free to share your thoughts, questions, whatever you got.
Well, I just, I represent the developers on this project who've been out here many times before the virus took place. But I'm just checking to see if they're on. I know David Bakewell, he's the developer. He was supposed to be on this call. I'm just checking. Is he, is he on it?
I see his name in the list of participants. Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm the local attorney. I'm going to defer the technical questions to David, but it's just a project that, you know, the E-Har project on, or Hampton Street that has been being worked on for quite some time now. They, they've made a lot of headway. We've had our community outreach meeting. We thought it went well. And I think it'd be a great project development, which we think is the void in this whole industry. So there's other components. There's retail. There's, there's cultivation, but we, we certainly want to meet the requirements of, you know, of the city of East Hampton. And so we're, we're here to work with you. The Google, by, and commit to David. Well, full session here. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do just want, I want to hear more comments and questions from people. I just want to remind people, we've had this come up in the past where we have a zoning ordinance change proposed. And it is sort of prompted by a specific proposal for a project, but we're not discussing the specifics of it. So, so this isn't really about a specific project. It's a change to zoning we're talking about that would cover the entire zoning district, the highway business district. So I'd like to try to keep, I'm not, I'm not commenting on what you said, Mr. Dunn. I just want to make sure going forward that we don't spend too much time focusing on a specific project. I do think that that can be helpful if we're looking at sort of how an example of a project might fit into different discussion, you know, proposals for the bylaw would be helpful. But I don't want to spend too much time going down the path of how a specific proposal would impact, you know, East Hampton or the district as far as sort of speaking about the zoning change proposal in more of a hypothetical sense. as far as sort of speaking about the zoning change proposal in more of a hypothetical sense. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Uh, looks like Rick Cernak has a hand up. Mr. Cernak, please, share your thoughts.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So one question I have immediately is, um, where do the applications stand today? Brenda just mentioned we have an applicant who asked us to look at this. And I imagine that is the E-Harp applicant? Is that correct?
We don't, there's no application before the planning board right now. I think, at least my understanding, and I think Brenda sort of informally, is that this came to us through the city council and somebody asked the city council to look at this. I believe it was Mr. Dunn's client, but there's no formal application or anything before the planning board, certainly.
Are there any other applications, um, right now for the highway business district that have been filed?
Applications for what?
Uh, for special permit or site review?
For cannabis per project?
Yeah.
I don't believe so, Jeff. Anything filed that we haven't dealt with already?
No, there, no, there are no, so I think what Mr. Cernak's referring to, there, there are no special permit applications filed at this point.
Okay, but we anticipate two of them.
Um, I mean, there are, yeah, I mean, this gets into a more general discussion of process. If you think about companies or establishments that are working through host community agreement process and potentially filing applications with the Cannabis Control Commission and then applying for a special permit, then yes, I think that, that there would be two establishments that are on, in, in this area that are working on that.
Okay, thank you. That's it for now.
Mr. Cernak, can you give us your address just for the record, please?
Yeah, certainly. My name is Richard Scott Cernak, Senior, and I live at 48 Hyde Hill Road, Williamsburg, Mass. And I'm a manager of Straffrout Properties. You showed the Cernak Fuel Building on North Hampton Street, 100 North Hampton Street. We own that building, and we also own the building in back of Cernak Buick. That is the only property that's improved on Mountain View Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anybody else? Either raise a hand or wave your actual hand? Or, um, if you're muted and you can't figure out how to do that, you can unmute yourself and say something if there's people that want to chime in and add something or ask a question? Jeff, you're muted, I can't hear you.
I see, uh, Kot, Kot Chasm is raising his hand.
Oh, an actual hand, okay, Kot. You're, you're muted too.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, I think you can hear me.
Yep.
Good question now. Understand the, the limit on size wise of 22,000 square foot. Now, my question is, how would these buildings look in the highway business? And what is the height, proposed height or the max height of these buildings? And I understand the 100-foot setback in this location now. Would it, now would it? Now, for me, it's like, um, it's set so to the street, front of the street, a 22,000 square foot building is going to be pretty big. So it's, it's going to over, I mean, it's going to pretty much run across, I don't know which direction it's going, but it's pretty much going to run across the front of North Hampton Street. Now, I think maybe we should look at possibly pushing it back further. I'm not sure either, so that way, you know, it might, and maybe the way it's going to look or what? I'm not sure. It's just a question that I have.
I can take a quick, uh, so the table, um, that we have is like dimensional requirement. So it's six dash two. And in the highway business, um, planned business developments follow, it's, it's really the same for a planned business development proposal, which is what we're trying to do is just align with these existing regulations, is a maximum height of 45 feet and three stories. And that, you know, that is, um, the same as other districts. So, uh, the downtown business district has that, um, ability, except there's some waiver requirement, there's some waiver ability, you can go taller in the downtown. In, for reference, I guess, in the industrial district, the maximum height is 30 and two stories. So there is, there's typically variation amongst each district. Uh, oh, and you asked us about design and what it would look like. That was one of the desirable features of going and aligning it with 8.1 is, um, there are some architectural design standards. They're not necessarily enumerated, but it gives the planning board the authority to talk about what a building looks like and its design and appearance. I hope that helps answer some of that.
It does, it, it does help a little bit. But, um, I'm just trying to think about what a 45-foot steel structure would look like in that section there. I don't think it would look that feasible in the highway business.
Um, Jeff, just, just for a point of comparison, how far setback is the new River Valley Co-op structure on the corner there? I know it's not 100 feet, but can you estimate approximately? I'm so bad at estimating distances like that.
I'll take a, I'll take a look as we, as we talk. I would guess that that's about 30 feet.
It's pretty close there, right? I mean, it's pretty close to the street and it's, again, I can, I can never guess height. I don't think it's three stories tall, but it might be pretty close to that 45 feet.
I'll go on Google Maps and measure it when you're talking to give you a reference.
So, so Kot, that might be a good comparable because it's, it's a, I think it's sort of similar to sort of a, the kind of structure that at least it sounds like you're concerned about. And you can sort of try to imagine how far away from the street you would think that it would make sense to put something like that.
Yeah, I still got another question too in regards to retail. Now, there's, there's also a 200-foot buffer, so we're trying to figure this out. Like, how would that affect us who would be applying for a special permit across the street?
Yeah, so I mean, I think just generally speaking, the, the buffer from location to location is done from the property line. So I don't think as proposed, that moving the structure further back on the parcel would alter abutting parcels or, or things like that that might sort of conflict with one another under that, the existing section of the cannabis bylaw, if I'm remembering correctly. Does that sound right, Jeff?
Yeah.
I think you get the buffer, buffers like boundary line to boundary line. It's not based on the door, the entrance or anything like that.
Correct, it's the property line.
So ba- basically, we're, we're looking at a little race here between us and across the street for a special permit.
I mean, again, we're, we're talking about a, a hypothetical general zoning bylaw change. We're not looking at two different projects here. But, but, but I would say that moving the structure setback further back on a parcel would not impact the proximity of, of two abutting parcels or parcels that were within that buffer. Moving the structure won't alter that at all. So if you have two struc, two parcels that are next to each other, the fact that one of them builds all the way in the back and one builds all the way in the front wouldn't change the 200-foot analysis under the cannabis bylaw as it's currently written.
Okay.
Anything else, Kot, right now?
Uh, yeah, I do, I did a little bit of research on, um, because we have a, uh, an RMD provisional license as well. And I was looking at the, um, the table of uses. Now, an RMD is not allowed in the highway business district, but in OMMD is. So due to that section in the bylaw, we're not able to change, do a change of location for our, our RMD, but we're not asking for any amendments. Uh, we're complying by the bylaws and moving forward with just our retail for now. So I'm looking at these changes here that there's, if you want to look at a registered marijuana dispensary cultivation, it, it, it allows cultivation, product manufacturing. It's the same type of use as the adult-use marijuana cultivation and product manufacturing, but yet this use is not allowed there. So for whatever reason, that table doesn't allow it in the highway business. So I'm looking at this as the same way as it's not allowing this type of use in a new structure.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll, I'll try, it's, it's, it's complicated. I can understand, um, Mr. Cossen, because I think it's, it's as you said, there is, there are two elements here, two, two companies in close proximity. So it's definitely challenging. You know, if, if you wanted to pursue the zoning change, that's, that's the process, um, that we're currently looking at was to look at this and potentially consider the zoning change. I, I think I, I think I mentioned this last time and I, um, I'm sensitive to it because, you know, I'm, I'm, I was here in 2018. This, this discussion of the new buildings for cannabis cultivation was, was discussed. And at that point in time, you know, there were sent time-sensitive issues to make sure that a zoning ordinance was passed. But this was flagged as something that would come back up. The timing obviously is awkward at best right now, given the, given the, the two property locations. But that's, it's, it's kind of normal for the zoning to be changed. And that's, there's a process to do that. So it's not something that you would be, you, you wouldn't be able to, um, you know, pursue that zoning change. And I kind of recall initially some, some emails, like when we first, when you first kind of presented that you were changing locations, that there was a question about, um, the OMD and the RMD and, and asking, you know, asking about changing it, but it never, it never materialized past, past that email. So the option is, is available. It's, it's not the easiest process to initiate, but it can, it can be done. And I think that's kind of what we're in the process of doing now.
Yeah, I really, I, again, Kot, I really want to focus on the proposed language here and the concept of it. I know you got some questions about some of the other stuff and how it might interplay with your proposal. But I think that at least for using our time at this hearing, if we can sort of keep it focused on the draft language and the proposal, that that would be helpful.
Jesse, just so you know, um, I did a measurement and the existing building that is where the, the new co-op is going to be is 130 feet off the street. But the crap shack next door is about 85 feet off. And I think the new building is in line with the crap shacks. So you're looking at about 80 or 85 feet off for the new structure.
Okay, so roughly speaking, that's about what the distance is. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris. Um, anybody else, comments or questions? Raise a hand, unmute yourself. Uh, it looks like we've got a phone caller. Uh, 266-9000. Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sean Sheraton, I live in Long Meadow. Uh, I'm interested in what you're doing, uh, in your cannabis development. Uh, I just want to talk to a question of, uh, transport. And I, as I understood it, transport is, uh, transportation is something that is normally handled in your industrial zone. Uh, I, I wanted to talk to the word of transport. In the cannabis space, the word of transport is quite a bit different than tractor trailers. It's, uh, it's really pickup trucks and cars with very small packages. You're talking a couple of pounds, something that essentially fits in a duffel bag. So transport is a term that's used by the state and, and it shouldn't dissuade you from allowing cannabis transport outside your industrial zone. Uh, the, the one thing that I, I do think you may consider in industrial zones is certain types of processing. Cannabis can be processed in a variety of ways, one of which uses materials that are explosive, butane particularly, and other similar solvents. Those type of extractions might be more valuable in an industrial zone as they are a danger to the public potentially. And whereas water-based extractions, carbon dioxide-based extractions, butter-based extractions, perhaps even alcohol-based extractions that are controlled in small amounts could be allowed. Uh, just, just something worth, worth considering in terms of, uh, what a cannabis business is and what it might be. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, and, um, I, I don't know if there's anyone else. I, there, there was a chat and we probably didn't kind of expressly say that we're, we do try to minimize the chat function. But there is a chat which asks where we can find information about these proposals and amendments. So where this particular set of amendments is available is through the Planning Department page. And so our website has a couple clicks, but Planning Department and then Forms and Documents brings you to a page with a couple menus. And there's a page for proposed zoning amendments. So, um, all the information that we're currently reviewing for tonight in the past little meetings is there. So just wanted to answer that.
Jeff, is it possible to just put the, a link in the, in the text string? Just, or is that against the?
Yeah.
Laws, these regulations?
I could try.
We won't tell, Jeff.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll focus on that in a second. So I don't know where the, like, what happens next in terms of discussion.
Well, do we have any other comments or questions from the public? Doesn't look like there's anybody else.
I have a quick question. I don't, I don't know if we got Kot's, um, address. Um, we, we, we know his name from the window, but do we have his address? For the record?
Kot, can you give us your address one more time?
Home address or the location address where we represent?
Home address, we usually get home address.
It's 170 Palmer Meadow Road, Southampton.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good catch, Chris. Brenda, you have a question or a comment?
Um, yeah, can I ask a question about Jeff's amendment?
Please.
Um, so Jeff, for the section where, um, you would require these establishments also have a retail business, would that essentially limited, how many retails are allowed now? So is that essentially capping it? Or are you envisioning expanding to six? Or, and, or what if there are six retail already? Then somebody who wants to do this wouldn't be able to? Can you talk a little bit more about what you're envisioning?
I guess there, to, to answer the overarching question, there's a current cap of six retail establishments. And so, you know, we've crunched the numbers before. There are three, um, oh gosh, I'm going to, I need to think this through. There's Insa, um, the verb is herb, and Holistic, which is Liberty. There's actually also, that's the one, Cook Building Supply, so that's, um, Herbology. So there are four special permits granted for retail. My intent was not to really connect it to the limit, although I can understand what your question is, is that there would be a limited number of places that would be allowed, um, overall. I think it's in line with the limit. To be honest, I didn't think about that. When I, when I put that together, the, the intent was really to make sure that the use of the property in highway business was a more active use. So that was really the intent of that.
But if we're adding retail, a component to this requirement, then both, then if, you know, then that caps it off at six. If we have two more applicants in the future at some point theoretically, that's our six.
Right, if you wanted to do manufacturing or cultivation, you'd have to do it outside the highway business or not in a building.
Right.
And Brenda, just to clarify, I, I, we probably shouldn't call this Jeff's proposal. I think Jeff, Jeff had asked me if he should try to throw together some stuff that would address some of the stuff that we had all raised for sort of like what gave us pause. So I don't know that this is Jeff's dream bylaw as much as him trying to find something that sort of checks boxes for what people had said in prior hearings. So we can call it Jeff's proposal, but I don't know that that's really what he was doing. Uh, any other comments or questions, either from the public or city councillors or planning board members? Yeah, Owen?
I mean, I also just want to say something for the record, but I do have some questions too. I, I know that the discussion, or at least the stated intent of the discussion is to kind of create an overarching, broad, sweeping, uh, zoning amendment. But I, I do feel that the, uh, impetus or the initiation of this was really from a specific development proposal. And I feel that we've been kind of dancing around that a lot. But I do think that from the sake of transparency and to some degree honesty, that that is where this amendment suggestion came from. What makes me really nervous right now, at least from the forward-facing optics, intentional or no, is that. optics, intentional or no, is that we now have another potential applicant who does not require any sort of zoning amendments in order to operate. And I'm worried now that by moving forward with this, it appears that we're influencing competition between two businesses in regards to acquiring special permits. And so just wondering, because of that, if it's prudent to kind of pump the brakes on this right now and to see how, see how this plays out.
I mean, I'll just say from my perspective, Jim, I'll get to you right next. But, you know, this is one of the reasons why we try really hard when we have these bylaw proposals in front of us to sort of focus on the bylaw. I mean, this, I think we've identified a few parcels this would apply to. I think once this ball is rolling, I mean, I think whether we pump the brakes or not, we're making a statement sort of in the midst of a, of a race between two entities, which is why, I mean, I think what we've tried to do in the past is just sort of stick with our regular process and do what we would do. And the chips fall where they may for specific special permit applicants and how that timing works. But I'm not, I'm not comfortable rushing this and I'm also not comfortable pausing it based on, you know, another applicant that may be impacted by it. I mean, what happens once we, you know, report back to the city council is obviously out of our hands. But I, I, I agree. I think this creates a lot of awkwardness where there's essentially a race to get a special permit under the existing bylaw. And I'm not, I'm not comfortable taking a step sort of in either direction based on that. I think that, I, I mean, we probably just need to keep our heads down and do this the way we normally would and not get involved in that other than on the sort of merits of the proposal that's before us. That's kind of been my focus. But it is awkward. I would agree, Owen.
Yeah, I just wanted to make my concerns known to the, to the body here. That's all.
Thanks.
Awkward's a good word.
Yeah. James?
I think you might have some additional questions though. And so I promise I'll pass it right back to you. But I wanted to respond to that because I had strong feelings about it as well. And wow, Jesse, you took most of the conversation right from me. I couldn't agree more with what you said. When this first came to me, I thought it came from the ordinance subcommittee. I had no idea there was an applicant behind it until I was told after the fact. Throughout this conversation, Mr. Kasim, whose permit we approved has indicated several times that this may be a competitive threat to him. And I, you know, of course, that's unfortunate. But for my money, we cannot be influenced by competition. And to pause at this point actually would be being influenced by someone stating competition. So I actually worry that if we were to pause as a result of this, that would be a bias and that we shouldn't. Jesse exactly has it right. We need to continue on with our normal processes if none of that existed. Thank you.
Owen, James is right. I definitely cut you off. You have some questions left, I think.
Uh, no. I guess the other question I would have is, is at what point, we'll just, we'll just say a hypothetical, a hypothetical applicant who might be in the pipeline, no pun intended. At what point are they grandfathered or grandparented into a special permit for, for cannabis in regards to if a new zoning amendment is passed, how that applies to them and their application? I'm just curious.
I'm, I'm not offering a legal opinion on this one. I don't get paid by the City of East Hampton for that. So I'll defer to Jeff, whatever he wants to say.
Well, the, the general, my general understanding of it is that you, you don't get grandfathered protection until the special permit is granted and an appeal period has lapsed. So there's a, there's a vote by a planning board. And then the decision gets filed with a clerk and there's a 20-day appeal period. After that point is when you would be protected from a zoning change. So, you know, the, the interesting thing, and the interesting thing with cannabis is that we're still, we're still seeing this unfold. And I, I think that there's, there's no guarantee who takes what steps next or what happens. And so I think the, the amendment, you know, there was discussion with the applicant, you know, and there was an observation that the zoning was not set up correctly. And so, you know, I, I took that and I related to the ordinance subcommittee for consideration as I would do with anyone who identifies a problem with the zoning or something in need of a solution. So, so it wasn't necessarily a direct request from the applicant, but it was an observation that the zoning was, needed to be adjusted. And then we went back and looked at the 2018 discussions. But, you know, there's, there's, there's many steps that no one knows what they're stepping on or what the outcome is. So in some respects, this is keeping the playing field level. Instead of considering it one way or the other, I think it's just creating that equal opportunity. And again, I do hearken back to the 2018 discussion that this is not something that was never envisioned to happen. I think it, it comes down to that word of awkward. The, the timing is awkward. But there are numerous steps for any applicant before they get a special permit or before they even apply for a special permit. So I think, I think one of the best approaches would be to just look at the amendment on its merits. And I understand there's questions about that. But then the applicants taking whatever subsequent steps they need to take, you know, it, it kind of is something that's separate from this discussion.
Thanks, Jeff. Owen, anything else?
No, I think those are thoughtful answers. Again, you know, my, my intention was to clarify some of the concerns around, around this topic, especially with some of the awkwardness. So those are, those are, that's good and some good feedback. And thank you, Mr. Zarvis and, and Mr. Timmy for your input. I think that, that's, that's helpful to kind of reframe it. So thanks.
Thank you. I got Tom and then Harry.
Yeah, just in terms of everything that's said, I, I kind of agree with, with everyone here. I mean, I, I, I think that when, you know, there's, it's an acknowledged, you know, fact that when, when the planning board and the city council initially looked at this, that there was a thought that this would be revisited. And personally, from my sort of philosophy on, on these sorts of things, all considerations of, you know, what this might do to one business or another aside, I think, you know, well, you know, it's funny because I, I don't agree with every, Brenda's made some super interesting points that are, but like my, you know, from, that have got me maybe thinking like, uh, just things that I hadn't thought of before. But that being said, my gut, my general philosophy towards these things is if you're not, if, if, if allowing some sort of use is not going to harm, you know, is not going to really harm anyone, then that probably is, is fine. So when we're talking about should new buildings be allowed and should, should these sorts of establishments be allowed in new buildings in the highway business district? My, my intention is to say that it's otherwise fine. But I just have to say, and, and this might not be particularly helpful, but like, when, when we're going through this, this whole thing and discussing this and acknowledging sort of the awkwardness of the situation when there are like, you know, real winners and losers, you know, potentially could be impacted by the decisions we make. I just, let's, let's just be real with ourselves about one thing, which is that not everybody gets the city council and the planning board to convene to talk about changing the zoning to fit, to make their business work in town. You know, ju- just in general, if you're talking about local government, there's lots of cases where people come with ideas that they think are good and what they get is sorry, rules are rules. And the idea of us doing this and convening for forum meetings to debate the merits of changing things, you know, this doesn't get, just get prompted all the time for everything. And I, I just, that doesn't necessarily change how my, how I vote, but I just don't want to drop, drop the pretense that like, that, that this, that just any business, you know, anywhere can get all of the people who are in this conversation here and chatting. I wish that were true and, and I think our city is probably better about it than others. But let's just be realistic about that for a second.
Harry?
How many minority marijuana establishments do we have in the city right now?
I don't believe that that bylaw carving those out ended up passing to city council, but I'm not sure. Is that right?
That's correct. It was withdrawn due to lack of available solicitor funds. But we had discussed resubmitting it when it appeared that we would have more money to investigate this via our solicitor. That's, that was the reasoning, from my understanding and from the public record.
Well, Paul, if we let it go to where it is, and then we want minority ownership, we're going to have to increase, obviously increase the participation. And then the city and expand to eight or 10 or whatever you think the right number would be.
I think that's right. If they're all taken, that's, that's the only option. Owen, yeah?
Well, yeah, I could just speak to that really quickly. The proposal for that, without getting too much into the weeds, it was a total of eight facilities, three of which would be to a designated defined list of, of, of what minority owners would look like. And at the time, we had allowed a cap on six. And we were discussing if this, if this body remembers, five quote-unquote regular licenses and three equity ones. So, but I, I don't want to stray too far, but I do, I do appreciate you, Harry, for bringing that back up. But it's, so just to clarify what the original proposal was.
Any other comments or questions from anybody, public, board members, councilors? All right, Cott, one more time, all right? You're still muted.
This is Sean Sheridan in Long Meadow. May I speak again? There was some new information that came up.
One, one second, Sean. We got another speaker first.
Okay. So I want to ask about section 8.1. Now, are you guys just talking about how this would affect buildings or existing buildings as well? Is that a cap on existing cultivation, like cannabis businesses or just for new?
Uh, this language would be for any. It doesn't carve out the exception for new buildings as, as I read it anyway. Sean, I've forgotten your last name already, but if you're still there, you can chime in now.
Thank you, sir. My name is Sean Sheridan. I, I'm glad you guys brought up the equity program. There are actually two priority programs. I don't know if you, you recognize the distinction. A couple of people use the word grandfather as it pertains to zoning. Just a couple of weeks ago, that term was stricken from the Commonwealth. You're not allowed to use it. It is racially insensitive term. And to that point, there's an enormous group of people who are in a priority program with the Cannabis Control Commission, some of whom are economic empowerment applicants, others of whom are social equity applicants, which are people who have been affected by the drug war. I'm excited to see that you've carved out an opportunity for economic empowerment applicants. You are indeed a progressive council, and that's exciting. But I wanted to talk quickly about lockout and what happens in my experience as towns adopt rules. You're considering a cap on a number of licensees. Perhaps you could consider a cap on a number of locations. I proffer the following. In Colorado, there is a building where there are multiple dispensaries and a single building. I would propose a design like that could work really well in East Hampton where you could facilitate perhaps a number of economic or social economic, social equity applicants to begin. And so, so to your question of licenses versus special permits, I'm certain nobody's ever suggested that to you before. Perhaps they're not quite the same thing. I think from a, from a design standpoint, you should be looking at the number of locations more than the number of licenses within those locations. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Jesse, quick question. Back to Cott's question about, does it relate to new buildings or, and existing buildings? So, and your answer was it relates to both. So is this saying then that if there is an existing building and it's more, say it's 40,000 square feet, is that not eligible to be improved for a license for, for cannabis manufacturing?
That's the way I read this right now. It doesn't, it didn't keep the language about building in an existing building, which was stricken. I suppose that you could imagine quite easily saying in the highway business, any cannabis establishment should be allowed in an existing structure, or, and then go through all these requirements for a new building. But the, the draft that was submitted today, I, I don't, I mean, I've only read it a few times. If someone else sees that it does, let me know. But that's the way I read it.
Okay.
Jeff, yeah, you want to chime in on that first?
Yeah, sorry. I see members. I, I think it's worth spending a minute on that because I appreciate Mr. Cosum's note. I, I would like to make, I would like to try to make the or, because I, you know, I, we're looking at this in the, the properties that we measured. You know, I'm sensitive. I'm not trying to, we're trying to allow, you know, the creation of new buildings with some regulations because we talked about this before. Right now, if you had a new building constructed, there were very little requirements. So we're trying to build some requirements for the new buildings. The, the thing of particular importance other than what Mr. Cockshaw mentioned was that I'm not trying to prevent the, the development of existing buildings. And the, the thing that is catching my attention is the three-acre size requirement. Because the preliminary measurement shows that I think the parcel that Mr. Kasim's looking at is less than three acres. And so I'm not trying, I was not trying to make that connection. I think we were trying to relate this to new buildings. Because this was part of, this is the whole crux of the discussion is that if you are putting this use in existing buildings, you're really less likely to be disturbing the character, changing significant things. So this was really kind of to give some guidance and some requirements for new stuff on larger parcels. So I would appreciate the ability to wordsmith for a minute to the board satisfaction. And again, this set of documents and the final language goes to city council. But I do want to, I would like to get some clarity on that before we depart.
All right. I got James and then Owen.
Well, I'm glad you said that, Jeff, because that's exactly what I wanted to touch on. And Cott, I was looking at that too, excuse me, Mr. Kasim. I was looking at that too as a real problem in this. And to be quite frank, I'm against most of the modifications here, although, you know, I, I think concession is important so that we can get something through. But this really has amounted to us adding, as it stands without the wordsmithing, a whole lot of new criteria for cannabis establishments in general. And for me, that just doesn't work on something that should be an easy, switching back on allowing new projects to be developed in the highway business for non-retail cannabis, which ultimately is what I want. It's none of this other language. It's just switch back on the ability to do it and done. But I'm willing to work concessions. As far as wordsmithing is concerned, Jeff, can we in that 10.10.4.2 specify where it says comply with the planned business developments requires, can we specify before it or after it that we're only referring to new construction? For instance, any cannabis establishment in new construction or something like that shall be permitted, provided somewhere in there, new construction? Help you guys?
Yes, this is what I just, because it's important. So I just added, so it's any, any cannabis establishment shall, shall be permitted, provided that any can, it's kind of repetitive. Any cannabis establishment is allowed in, in an existing building. So the key phrasing here is that it's any cannabis establishment is allowed in an existing building. And then or, and this is the, what, what Jesse was suggesting, or other than one that is solely retail and in a new building shall comply with the planned business development requirements under section 8.1 with the provisions that we talked about. So I just, it may need a little
Does other fit? Other seems odd to me.
I think what you want, first of all, Jeff, I think that second allowed, that allowed after cannabis establishment is should be located or something like cannabis establishment is located in an existing building.
Yep.
Or in the event, like in
Or one.
construction, or, you know, one is located in a new building.
Yeah.
The one that is located in a new building and then you can just complete, finish that sentence.
Much better. Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. And I, I appreciate Mr. Kasim's, you know, question. That's not, you know, the real intent was to give some, some guidelines to new construction here.
All right, Owen?
Yeah, I had a similar question. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't reading this incorrectly, that it was eliminating any current zoning around existing buildings. We were just proposing additions to non-existing buildings. So it looks like you're addressing that here, correct?
Yes, I, that, now it reads that way.
Yeah, it's that first any, it's Yeah, it's that first any, it's the first line in red, any cannabis establishment. And so that's, that's important phraseology, which is, so that's retail, cultivation, manufacturing and the like shall be permitted, provided that, provided that.
The.
Yeah, provided that.
The, yeah. I'm, I'm just going to pipe in here. As I look at this, I think that this is a good fix for it. But I can't help but think that it would be better to make visual sense of what's happening if we could actually indent and put bullets for the A, B, and C under the or and have the two items of the or and the existing as sort of their own pure category. So that visually makes sense and we don't have to, you know, read it four times to figure out. Because I don't want anyone to be confused that, you know, or is located in a new building, then what follows where it starts going through A, B, and C applies to both, which I still think the possibility for confusion exists.
That's a, I, I think that's fine. That's a structural change. That's fine. And welcome to the world of zoning. When you read zoning, it's confusing. But yeah, I understand that visually that could be broken out. So that's fine. That makes sense to me.
Any other comments or questions, public or members? Jim, yeah?
Jeff, just, I, I hesitate to bring this up, but I think we might be nearing the end, finish line with this. I'm not a big fan of the 100 foot back, but you just did a lot of researches showing 100 feet, which allowed us to make criteria on it. I think, somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, because I actually haven't seen it. The, our city councilors, maybe you can confirm that. Councilor Kozinski had put forward some formal proposal perhaps that was 75 feet, I think. Am I wrong about that?
I think that's right, but I think it was side yards. Yeah, Owen, you got it?
Yeah, there was a proposal for, I believe, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong here on the record, but the proposal was to create odor mitigation via increased side setbacks where a highway business plot parcel overlaps with a residential plot. And we just, we discussed that, dismissed it without prejudice because, well, a number of things. But so it wasn't, didn't have to do with setback from the street. It had to do with, on the side. And so.
And from a residence. That's right, Owen, yeah.
I see, okay. I, you know, I question two things in this. The rest of it, I'm willing to let go, even though I'm not particularly comfortable with the criteria and restrictions we put in place. But the two things are, I'd like to see that 100 brought down. I'd like to talk about that a little. Why is our number 100? Why isn't it 50, which for me is more appropriate? And the other thing is actually a restriction that I do think belongs. And I'm thinking about a piece of visibility that we've talked about, and that's, you know, sort of near the Tasty Top area. And a three-story building there is going to be a nuisance. And I wonder if for these buildings, we might consider limiting them to one story in the 25,000, a, a, as an additional criteria. Or maybe if not one story, maybe a height limit. And I think, Jeff, you said something about 40 feet, if I, if I remember correctly, was the, the limit, which sounds to me, you know, maybe we could set a number of 30 or something like that. Again, we're trying to protect the pristine character of that area and driving through our city, which I think is within our purview. Tossing those two things out, 50 feet and a height limit that's different from the regular zoning. Thank you.
So what, before we go down that road, I just want, so my understanding, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our role as the planning board here is we simply have to report on this proposal, right? So we don't necessarily have to recommend or approve anything. We just have to report back and then the city council sort of does with it what they want. Is that right?
Yes, I think that's right. But, you know, we've taken the amendment to a certain place and I think, I guess it presents a, a question that you, I think you have an option as a group.
Yeah, we could definitely, I mean, what I'm getting at is I think there's been some people on the planning board at least that have expressed a concern with any manufacture or cultivation in the highway business. And I don't want to spend another two weeks like wordsmithing around the edges if we, if it's just not going to get a majority anyway. And we might as well, I mean, remember this goes to city council for more public hearings and tweaking and, and they sort of have free rein at that point within the scope of what's here. But I think we might need to think about that. Owen?
Yeah, I mean, having watched this unfold over the last couple of months, you know, something I would, I would offer here, and I don't, I don't know procedurally if it's something we can do, but I wonder if this amendment should be referred back to the ordinance committee where we could actually really work it out and hammer out kind of a, you know, a near finished product that we then bring back to planning. Because what I'm, I'm concerned what's happening here. What I've, what I've been seeing is that we came forward with a really simple proposal and then have all these other ideas of how the ordinance should be structured or the amendment to the ordinance should be structured. And we're kind of doing ordinance work in the midst of a, a, a shared, open, public meeting, public hearing, a joint public hearing. And I don't personally want to take, I think that the input's been great, but I also don't want to take up more time that we might be able to, we might be able to, we would be better served within our committee and certainly from input from any members here and members of the public, and then bring this back in kind of a more polished product, given all the inputs that's happened here. Thoughts?
Yeah, I don't think we can refer it back, but I do think that theoretically, the planning board could continue this indefinitely and you could continue it to your ordinance meetings and you guys could come back with another proposal for like revised language. I mean, we, the planning board members, we, we do this all the time in these public hearings. It's like we revise and draft and edit this. I'm just thinking, and I don't mind doing that. I mean, we've had ones where we've done this for months and months and months. It just occurred to me that where we don't actually have to agree on this language, that if there's three people that aren't going to vote for any manufacturing or cultivation in the highway business, we might as well just vote on that now and it can go to city council for them to do what they want. But I'm also happy to continue this sort of indefinitely and have ordinance come back with a proposal with, with altered language. Jeff, do you have a concern with that?
I mean, I think what you said initially, Jesse, is about the opportunity to potentially extend it to council because there will be additional discussion. I, I guess I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't really like the idea of sending it back to ordinance because then you're going to be with limited input. So you're not going to have the planning board in attendance. I think, I think we already did that. So like we started with ordinance and then, you know, the process is really to build the more robust discussion with the planning board during the public hearing process. And, and this is the grinding and out, this is my understanding, this is my expectation of the process is this is the grinding and out process where then you, you get to a point and then you send it to council. And at that point, you have vetted many of the elements and you, like I think even whatever the decision is, going from 100 feet to 50 feet, you bring it to council with whatever the decision is and it's been vetted by, by ordinance and the land board at the same time. So I would just say that I think we would lose quality by sending it back to ordinance because then you're going to send it back to the planning board for a full public hearing and you're likely to get more response then. And so it just kind of creates a cyclical, cyclical area there. But I mean, I think that we're very close. I think we've had good discussion about this. I appreciate Jesse's acknowledgement that, you know, a recommendation to city council may not be unanimous, but I don't think it needs to be.
I don't think it even needs to be a recommendation, Jeff. I think it just needs to be a report. So I think that we could, I think we could vote on this language and vote, you know, no one in favor of it, but it still reports back to city council and they can still pass it as a bylaw. I don't think we have to approve it in any way, but.
Yeah, I mean, just to take Members Arvis's couple of questions, I, I think one of them is easy. I think that the height, I think is actually, I think there's, what we try to always do is go to some other reference point. I, I think going to one story puts us in a tough spot because, so there's not really, I'm looking at the table and there's, there's no other, you know, there's no other zoning categories that require one story. So, but we do it for comparison is if we go to the industrial district, it, it drops from a maximum height of 45 to 30. And then it goes from three stories to two. So at least we're drawing on something that it's, you know, there's a comparison piece. And I think that that's reasonable to do. So I think that that's kind of straightforward for the, for the consideration now, whether we incorporate it or send that question to council. But the 50, going from 100 feet to 50 feet, I'm, I'm actually very open to that as well because I think the, the only word that we would need to add in is a minimum. So we want, you know, a structure, a new structure to be a minimum or, I guess, yeah, at least 50 feet. So I think it's at least, sorry, the word would be at least. You know, setback at least 50 feet from the boundary of Route 10, which gives the flexibility that a design could go farther. If, if a, if a design wanted to incorporate another building up front, it's at lea, it's the word at least. So, I mean, I think that those language tweaks are fine. And then I think at full city council, there can be additional discussion or questions about why that was decided or proposed or considered.
Just as a point of reference, the Avrashon hardware from the front of that building to the street is 40 feet. And Liberty, the new Liberty building is 60 feet. So it's somewhere in between Avrashon and Liberty as far as 50 feet from the street, to give you a point of reference.
Thanks, Chris. So, I mean, I guess, I mean, not to put people on the spot, but we're about to all be put on the spot anyways. So I mean, are there any planning board members who thinks for their vote, it's a total waste of time to discuss amendments to anything that allows for manufacturing and cultivation? I say that as someone who, I was kind of swayed by some of Brenda's comments a couple of weeks ago. And I'm, I would put myself on the fence, but still willing to discuss these amendments. But I don't know where other members are, if this makes sense to, I think at this point, we're talking about continuing this hearing. But, you know, continuing this to keep trying to wordsmith? Or are we just ready to vote, you know, because there's not enough people that are going to support any of this language anyway? Is there anybody that's just opposed or, or, you know, there's no way they would vote for any amendment that involves these uses in that zone?
I, I can say that I will oppose it if there's no retail component. I think that it really needs a retail component, which this revised language does talk, discuss. I'm not for a cannabis cultivation slash manufacturing facility that does not have a retail component in highway business.
I think I personally agree with that. Thanks. Brenda, what do you have to say?
Yeah, I agree with Chris on that. And, you know, some of the other sort of stipulations, I think there's some wiggle room. I'd like to see five acres instead of three acres because there's only like two lots that would meet that requirement. But with the retail in there, if it's true that it would be limited to six, that kind of addresses my concerns about multiple 50,000 square foot buildings going up in a zone that's zoned for vehicle traffic dependence, you know? My main issues are the, the process, which I thought Owen sort of described really well. I shared his concerns about how this unfolded. I think part of it is I didn't benefit from the 2018 discussion. I've listened to that video twice now. But there's something about participating in it that, that really does change it. So, you know, I'm willing to consider that, that I, I really missed something here. And then my other concern is that these buildings really, I don't think, meet the intention of some of the findings, many of the findings in the Highway Business District report, nor in the master plan. I have some real environmental concerns about sustainability of these kinds of businesses that use enormous environmental resources. They are huge contributors to CO2 emissions. They use an enormous amount of water. And, you know, right now residents are being asked to, and Hadley, there's an outright ban. In East Hampton, we have restrictions. You know, there's no provisions for any type of green effort of gathering rainwater and using it, recycling water. I read a report today that said one cannabis plant requires six gallons of water a day for 150 days. I don't know if it's, I mean, I, I tried to go to, you know, real sources, but, and my last comment is, when the federal prohibition ends, and it's coming, I think there are only three states that don't allow it outright. It's coming in the next four to eight years, I bet. It's going to open up traditional banking and financing. And I think a lot of cultivation is going to move to California or offshore where they can grow greenhouses and fields much cheaper. And, you know, I just don't want to see two, three, four, 25,000 square foot warehouses sitting there where other industries aren't even allowed to use it. So then we're going to be having more conversations about how to repurpose empty buildings. I think you guys were just so brilliant in saying, let's repurpose the buildings we have. I think that was brilliant. If you had allowed new buildings, I think we'd be looking at three or four new buildings on those beautiful lots and three empty large buildings, including Liberty, Cooks, and now Sernax, sitting there unused. So thank you for doing that. That's all I have to say. But yes, I'm willing to continue the conversation and to listen.
Thanks, Brenda. Very good points, all of them. Uh, Jim, yeah?
I'm muting. Jesse, thank you for asking that question about whether we should continue. That was extremely useful. I, I just want to see if I understand what was said correctly there. Everyone seems to have some sticking points. One of the big ones is that retail needs to be added into this so that it's limited to six. And I want to state, while it's not my preferred, I'm willing to concede that so that we can move forward. If that's going to keep this discussion going so that we can make a recommendation and pass it off, I'm in favor of putting a component in that says that retail is a must, just so that you all know, so that we can stay in this and keep the fight, the good fight going.
So I guess the question is whether we need more discussion about either of James's last amendments, dropping the 100 feet to 50 feet and reducing the height in some way. Jeff, I think you, you think the height is a little more troublesome for us to require or limit?
No, actually it was the opposite. I mean, I think it's, I think it's within the discussion realm of, of considering those, like tailoring this. So the, the opportunity is to kind of give some specific requirements to new building. My only recommendation was to just try to at least fall to some dimensions that are already existing. And I think we've had at least the relationship and the discussion of, of maybe the industrial district. You know, it, it falls in line. I'm looking at the table. So again, just to, just to reiterate that right now, the highway business is a maximum height of 45 and maximum stories three. Really in terms of our, our commercial uses, the, the rest of them go down to 30 maximum height and two stories. You know, and the, the Mill Industrial District is our one, actually the Mill Industrial District in downtown, you are allowed to go up higher. So that doesn't seem unreasonable. And I'm, I'm pretty comfortable talking about the 50 foot and just saying that shall be at least 50 feet. Those are well within the design criteria that we were kind of already talking about.
I would just say about the height, the only problem I have is that this is limiting it just to one proposal on one site. So, you know, anything else that goes in, I think it's entirely possible. We've seen how this has unfolded in East Hampton, right? I mean, I wouldn't say it's a foregone conclusion, even if this amendment went through, that there's a cannabis campus at that location and pretty much any other use there could be 45 feet tall. So I'm not sure that it really, you know, trying to be consistent with my philosophy of thinking about this in the theoretical and not a specific project. I'm not sure that that really protects that U shed the way we've talked about at earlier hearings, but that's just my thought. James?
I just want to say I am moved by that. That's a tough one. I'm conflicted by it.
So I guess we could either discuss this a little more tonight or we can continue this again. And Jeff can look at some of the 50 foot setback proposals or some of the height restrictions that we might be able to discuss at a future meeting. I'm, I'm open to either. Jim?
I, I really like what Jeff said about just putting in minimums. I mean, if there's no one here that really, because again, city councils can argue these things and you can be assured if they don't like the numbers, they're going to modify them. You know, the minimum 50, if we, if we can just put that in and maybe a note that we discussed height, but put no limits in so that they can continue discussion there. Maybe we can just, maybe it's time we push that off with that. Maybe that's taking it far enough.
So you would have the language that Jeff just tweaked, but instead of the 100, it would be 50. And, I mean, I guess we have two of the counselors here, so they certainly can report that there was discussion about height limits and, and sort of the pros and cons and the logistical issues of that. So that could certainly still be discussed. I mean.
Which leaves the retail component that I.
Which leaves the retail component that I promised I'd.
Yep.
And that, that was in there. So that, you know, that was to member Cockshaw's kind of request, that was already in there, in the version that was sent out for, for today. So that, you know, that doesn't require any modification if, if everyone's kind of generally understanding that that's tying the two together to better match the highway business district. I think the only thing I heard that we didn't maybe discuss was member Sailor's request for, to increase the acreage from three to five.
Yeah, she raised that. And then I think she said that because there was going to be a cap, because there is a cap, that she wasn't as concerned about a large number of those, but I don't want to speak for Brenda if she wants to.
Well, I would like the five acres. I wasn't sure if it was possible because if three go out of business in the, you know, in Liberty and, you know, the herb reserve or provisions, if they go out of business, that creates two more licenses and there's seven plots over three acres in the Highway Business District on Route ten. So I would like to see five acres. Anywhere horse trading, James?
Yeah.
Hey, I gave.
Are you willing to consider going with seventy-five? I really think fifty feet is so close for a building of this size. And if the city council doesn't like it, they'll change it. I mean, other planning board members, what do you think?
I'd be more comfortable with seventy-five. I'm thinking about fifty feet, that seems to be, when I'm thinking about forty feet, when I park at Abashan and then have to back out of that spot and get back on the highway, that's really dangerous. So, and so if you'd want a, a grass strip in between the building and the street, you're more than fifty feet at that point. You're more in the sixty foot range, sixty to seventy feet. So I think seventy-five might be more reasonable to allow a grass strip, a sidewalk, and be able to get traffic moving around the building safely.
I'm willing to meet halfway. Seventy-five works for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're good at this.
So do we compromise from three to four?
Five, and they're going to tweak it.
Okay, so, so are we, are, are planning board members comfortable with a vote on this or do we want to talk about this more? I don't want to force anyone to vote if they want to have, I'm, I'm thinking specifically Austin and Harry, who I haven't heard from in a little bit. Like I don't want to strong arm anybody into this.
I'm comfortable voting.
Okay. Harry, how about you? Are you comfortable voting on this? Yea or nay?
I'm able to continue it?
No, we're, we're voting on the language that's actually in this version too, that Jeff has revised on the screen.
Yeah.
Okay. And so Tom and Owen, do you guys have any objection to us voting on this now? Do you feel like we need to talk about this more? You guys have a second chance, of course, at city council to do whatever you want with it, but it is a joint hearing.
No objections here. I'll say that there's, I'm, there's a lot that I'm chewing on right now in terms of some really interesting points that people have, have brought up. But in terms of the, the way that you're weighing in, you know, I, I have no, I, I don't even know if I have a right to voice an objection, but if you gave me the opportunity, I don't, I, I, I have any objection.
All right.
I'm, I'm more than pleased to, as much as I like spending time with you guys, I'm more than pleased to move this out of your docket and move it back to the council's purview. You know, and I think this accomplishes kind of what I was suggesting earlier where you're giving us recommendations, this will be discussed in committee and, you know, ultimately brought to the full council in some form. So this is fine with me.
Great. All right, so I will take a motion on that amended version two if someone wants to make it.
I motion to recommend to city council our amendments for section ten point ten to allow cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, research and development in new buildings in the Highway Business zoning district, asking the present city councilors to please relay the things on which we had difficult and lengthy conversations.
Can I get a second?
Brenda, do you want to do it since you like worked your butt off on this?
I can't hear you, what?
All right, I'll second.
All right. So voting to recommend the revised amended amendment of ten point ten point four point two.
I'll vote for it, yes.
James?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
Brenda?
Why are you saving me for last? Aye.
I haven't voted yet, Brenda, I'm going last.
Okay.
I am also an aye. So that will go to city council and people can feel free to go to that hearing and, and chime in there with city councilors, including planning board members, if you have more you want to share. James, we don't have to beg the city councilors to raise our issues, you could actually just go and raise them yourself on another night.
Ouch, Jesse, that hurt.
With all your free evenings. All right, excellent. Thank you so much for all of that, for everybody who participated, public and board members. We actually have an item of new business that was late added to our agenda here. So this is review and request to discontinue Stanish Street and make a recommendation to city council. This is in connection with that project we approved on Colonial Ave. And I believe Owen Zera is going to give us a little background on this.
I will, but in the meantime, Jesse, would it be appropriate now, since we've exited the agenda item of the joint public hearing, that I could ask for a motion to end our joint public hearing?
Yes, please.
I will accept the motion if there's another city councillor happens to be on the ordinance committee who wants to make it.
So I'm moved.
Second, I will take a vote. Councilor Peak?
Aye.
And I am also an aye. And so the joint public hearings are closed. Chairperson, Timmy, would you like me to speak to this at all?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to just give a brief, I mean, we, we voted, one of the conditions in our special permit was to, that the city council would discontinue it. I thought we were done with that, but I guess it comes back to us now for another recommendation. So maybe a quick explanation of how we got back here.
I'll give you the TLDR version. The property committee met regarding this. It's a paper street that I believe through some motion in, I think nineteen fourteen or the, the nineteen teens was voted at that time by town representation, but for a multitude of reasons, never was actually put into, was actually ever made into a street. And it still exists on maps, but there's a request, I believe, for a development and, and the discontinuance of the street is important, I believe, to that development happening. Property subcommittee met, we discussed it. There was not a lot of concern about this. We agreed to discontinue, to vote to discontinue. And I guess part of that process is that we need a recommendation from the planning board as well, yea or nay? And then the full council can vote on that.
Great. So we, we dealt with the paper street in depth during that Colonial Ave thing. So I don't think anybody probably has any questions about this, but if anybody from the planning board has any comments or questions, all right, anybody from the public that's here that has any comments or questions about this Stanish Street discontinuance, same concept, you want to raise your hand virtually or on video or unmute yourself. I don't think this is a hot topic, so I don't expect comments. All right, see, oh, James, yes?
Just clarification, I, I'm understanding here, are we looking to probably come up with our usual of no additional comment? Or are we looking for something a bit stronger here?
No, we, I think we have to actually recommend that the city council discontinue Stanish Street. And, and I think the other one pertinent fact, I believe the city engineer, DPW, there's no benefit to the city, they've determined in having the street or continuing.
Oh, yeah, no, I remember, you know.
We went through all that, but just for the record. So, yeah, I think the motion.
A motion to recommend that the planning board recommend to city council, again, that we discontinue Stanish Street. How many times will this happen?
Perfect.
I'll second that.
All right, second of all, Chris. All right, so in favor of recommending discontinuing Stanish Street, Brenda?
Aye, yes.
Harry?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Excellent work, everybody. Tom and Owen, thanks again. And you too, Jeff, a lot of work. Owen, something to say before we adjourn?
Just quick, quick clarification. Do we require any sort of letter for you or, or, or would an email to, to me as the property chair? Planner Bag, what do we need in terms of communication?
Yeah, what I, what I will do is I'll put together a brief memo, which is a planning department letter, saying that on, you know, Tuesday, August eighteenth, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend the discontinuance of Stanish Street. I, I think I want to include in there, as the chairperson said, I think, you know, it, it's based, it, it's based almost entirely on the fact that the city in particular has, has no interest whatsoever in, in building the street. So if everyone's comfortable with that, I can get that together tomorrow morning, which should be sufficient for your packet in your, the council meeting tomorrow night. If that makes sense, that, that's what I would do.
Great. Excellent. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All right, voting in favor of adjourned, Harry?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Austin?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Excellent. Thank you again, everyone. Have a good night and we'll see you.
Excuse me, point of order, are we on next week?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
I just assumed we're on every Tuesday. Plus TV.
For planning board members, yes, next Tuesday is August twenty-fifth and it's the continuation of the Duncan Donas proposal. So I'll, I should have some information. Hopefully, well, let me say, let me rephrase that. If I have any information, I will certainly email it to you. And if not, I'll give a friendly reminder towards the end of the week with the agenda and the link and stuff.
Excellent. And actually, one interesting thing that gentleman Sean, I can't remember his last name again, he mentioned the term grandfathering. So the appeals court did actually determine last week that they will no longer use it. I don't think they formally outlawed the phrase, but it does have a racist origin. It's kind of interesting for people in a zoning context, we use that term a lot and so.
I've used it a lot. It worried me like, oh gosh, what have I done? I have, I'm going to have to look it up.
It's got a history, it's got a long history, apparently.
I always pictured my grandfather.
Yep. So it's actually a lot, there's a lot of interesting etymology there, but it's interesting for, for those of us that talk about zoning a fair amount, it's, it's going to be a hard one to get rid of, but it's probably worth all of us taking a little time and effort. Yeah, Austin?
Jesse, did it say, did you read the article, what it said for replacement word?
So municipal lawyers have sort of been spinning some terms and basically getting into sort of like prior existing permitted uses. There, there's no real accepted phrase right now, but it's not as quick as grandfathered. So it's going to be a cumbersome phrase, I think, whatever people settle on going forward.